... um, making me too long in. But you know, let's call it the word here. Something.
Well, because they just made it because why? I'm super grateful for Richard. What you can say. And install with the city of just so.
And. We're here. Just want to be there with everybody. Your. Quite a few things to bring to your attention. The village board is letting you commission. Um, you guys make all the decisions and means. Some suggestions on ways that we can go forward in these things. So, um, first of all, to be able to do some discussion. Here in which administrator hours and expectations after their whole. Um, what our plan here is done is is that if this board agrees to, um, four, five. Number four and five, um, we will more than likely have a interim administrator here. Jessica, son, she should give us the ability for the village administrator to spend the. The interim administrator not only to spend time with the next village administrator, which I think is. So we get some coordination. You're speaking to me now with that. Um, right now, looking at. They can commit about twenty two weeks. This administrator, um, I did take some time today and I reached out to, um, actually over the last couple of weeks. I asked Ashley to go through to get information from the staff on what they feel are day to day support. That they need from, um, the, um, I guess. The acting administrator, um, right now we have Jessica. Jessica, I think you're putting in fifty five to sixty hours.
Yes.
Um, the, some of the things I just want to talk about is in twenty hours. Do you expect this person to be able to provide department head level support and leadership to community development? And the Department of Public Works as consultants in place are more for projects and tasks versus day to day support. So, um, there's, uh, there's support that the, um, acting administrator will need to do. We're also talking about budget support as far as clarifying any questions back to presentation. Uh, reviewing agendas for accuracy and completeness, running finance personnel and village board meetings. Signatory on certain documents, PCN signatures, which are favorable change notifications, AP approvals. Approval of new hires, office, uh, offers or promotions and handle negotiations if necessary. Approve limited term employment positions, hires and their temporary appointments. Handle, uh, employee disciplinary action and or grievances procedures and investigations when necessary. The challenge we're going to have is, of course, our acting administrator will need to be there to be able to pick their primary goal here. And just correctly, my law is really packet, um, packet assembly. Also working with staff on Mondays as we have. Weeks that we have before meetings, we have a staff meeting in the Monday would be the preparation for the. The board meeting and it's maybe probably thirty Thursday, then we'll be full days getting the next week's. Also letting that the stuff that we put in place here is Jonathan. Packet for our, um, the board meetings and conduct as well.
Just to clarify, Jonathan reviews the agenda. He does not review the packet in advance.
Right. So there's definitely twenty plus hours engaged here. Administrator, the acting administrator position, um, and, um, I think we probably need to have a little bit more support than that. But I think that's pretty much. PAA at this point in time. Um, my recommendation on this is, uh, you know, we've already started talking with the department heads to really discuss. Really to discuss the, um. What we should be doing in the next three to four months and kind of I explained it to them is, I think, Reckon brought it up. We can deal with the pipes that burst today. It's really going to be for us to determine the pipes that could burst. So I think all department heads look at, we're really going to. In a management of current things that take place right now on our planning will probably go backwards just a little bit until we get. Until we get in. You can't carry on sixty hours. And we will. So just one. Um, I'm more than willing to come in here. Step up my. For instance, in the hall, I'm on you and. See how much I can do. So discussion questions.
Just to clarify, Jonathan looks, reviews the agenda and any whatever.
The, the draft agenda.
And that's it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
President, does it make sense if, if we're thinking that this is not going to be enough hours to fulfill? Just the basics of what we need done that. We have somebody else from the committee from the board is like appointed as a. Another type of interim minister, I need maybe you.
Well.
How this.
I would be happy to represent with those one jobs, represent. Happy to do that. Being able to carve time of my current life to be able to do that across with the village board and wait to see.
That's true. I mentioned President. Dan. Uh, at our previous meeting that, um, I too, like I, I said, like, hey, I'm willing to step up. I have part time. I can come in. I have patients background. I, I really do see this as an all hand fund deck sort of thing. Um, I, so I just want to echo that, like, I'm, I don't know how we could possibly ask. Of a committee help, but I'm willing to help out in any way. And I think importantly, all kind of try to.
So, um, let's.
Um, so I'm not, am I clear in that you're saying you will take over some? Um, charges of.
No, I'm not saying that. I think. There are some times that, that. Will be able to reach out to, um, to the respective person here. What I'm saying is, is that it might be bad to have a little additional presence here during the week when. Just going to stay in all there because what are we doing? And doesn't here be able to be present here for the, the employees. Be able to answer questions for them and then be able to relay that to Clint. I'm not with Clint's next day or his, um, his long day or short day.
So. You're asking if that is something even like you to.
Yes.
Um, so how would we be aware of the questions that Clint is asking you? And the information that you were to be playing so that we're all on the same page?
Um, well, I think the, the open thing is, is that certainly if it's out at the end of the week. A, I'm not sure. Jessica's been very good while, and Jessica's been good, very good while putting out a weekly, um, a weekly update. That's something I can certainly do. Certainly we can have. Engaged in some of these decisions, but certainly if something happens, but let's say that there's a, there's an HR issue that comes to me at that point. Make sure that people is aware of that the next day of what the HR issue is. And so that there's a continuity of communication that goes. Up to the village board.
So I know in the past, though, like we spoke of this a month or so ago, you know, we did. In for our administrator previously, we had somebody kind of semi in charge at the village hall. And that was the finance director or somebody who's been here. Um, I just don't know if that's something that, you know, who thinks is okay because you're, you know, you're elected, you're on the board. That there's supposed to be a.
I guess I'm not interpreting what the president is proposing is actually discharging any of the duties of the village administrator. As opposed to making sure that someone is around to. Basically ensure that the, that we are tasking the administrator with the most pressing items that the interim administrator needs to do in those twenty hours.
Hmm, so I, if I'm understanding correctly, it's more just that, um, that. It's more of a communication conduit to make sure that we are staying on task and we're dealing with the most pressing matters within this twenty hours of work.
Right.
Delicated.
Right.
So it's just a communication. I'm here to provide information, a two week conduit straight is, if that's what I'm understanding.
Right, because ultimately, the person who is serving as interim administrator, if the board chooses to do this. Uh, they're a contracted service. They're not an employee, but ultimately they still need to. Get direction in what services they need to perform within that limited time that they have. And other than things that the board votes on that need to get done, ultimately. There ought to be a person who was providing that direction and it makes sense that, to me anyway, you may all may disagree, but. Um, unless the seven of you vote for something separate on a particular item that the village president is. Biding that direction on sort of a day to day, week to week basis.
So just, uh, bring that out there to the board if that's what the board would want to do. Certainly we can have a discussion at the next board meeting if you. So.
Question, um, there's a lot of fifty to sixty hour, um. Requirements that, like we said, we can't fit all of these job duties into a twenty hour work week. So in addition to needing a communication conduit with this temporary person, my question is. Are there specific low hanging fruit tasks that perhaps the seven of us could help? Take care of on a day to day to kind of so that the more pressing matters can, can stay with the interim person that we would. I'm just trying to think of like, how can we help? Take some of the weight off of that person's plate.
Well, it's, in reality, our job is to establish, um, policy. It's not to actually do the job. That's where we have to, where we have to stand. What I'm recommending is, is that I have somebody, we are potentially going to have somebody coming in here. Who has a bit of knowledge about graft and is a professional, very, very much a professional. I'm just saying at this point in time, um, we, the individual is just going to basically be somebody that's going to be dealing with any issues that flare up. Plus with specific things we need to direct him do to service the board. I think in fact, some communication back and forth over the first couple of, uh, what a couple of weeks to the person that we get somebody in here. Might be within the best interest of the village. Again, um, that would be up to the board. If he was so signing to do that, I'd be happy to do that as much as I possibly could.
How many hours would you anticipate?
I, you know, I think it's, you know, I, I kind of look at this, if, if we look at twenty hours a week, that's, you know, probably, uh, you know, five hours a day, perhaps. From, from, um, uh, from PAA, you know, probably say maybe four or five hours a week that I would come in and, you know, sit. And in the desk, just to be able, you know, perhaps come in on a Friday and say, okay, I'm here. Uh, what kind of questions do you have? Because again, the employees here too, I mean, we're down. Uh, public works director, we're down, uh, we're going to be down to be a planner. And, um, the, the challenge that we have is, is that there may not always be the time with their, or the administrator. Deal with some issues that may come up in those positions, being able to say, okay, hold on, let's, let's, first thing I want to, um, the administrator to do tomorrow is this. Or, hey, I need you to, like, I think you really want every one of our employees taking home calling, Mr. Chris, there's a problem.
I'm asking whether that's you or somebody else. I do have. If you're talking that, of course.
Yeah, well, are you?
Thank you. I mean, I throw my hat around two hundred part time. I would love to be halfway down. The village trade. We draw mine.
Okay. All right. So what we're hearing here, let's have some instances.
Yeah.
On the actual question, do you want to be supporting the administrator?
So I would say I would be with you supporting that person to know we're.
I don't see. Well. Policy or purse and we provide you. Um, we do all of that for our meetings. I, I think that having to. Be, I'll use the words more attentive, not necessarily have. Uh, be here every day more attentive. So. I think because of you, you have been here and you've been through our other administrative chain if we're going up. It may be very helpful engaging with our contract administrator to provide what the priorities. Okay, because I see a lot of things here that we could get, we could get sidetracked on again because we're, we're lacking supervision in the Department of Public Works. And, and, uh, planning department, you know, these types of things since we're having vacancies. To, to say this is our priority, you know, be the filter. This is the priority because these other things we can tamp down or we can. We can have our acting person that's running the department take care of that. And these are the things we need to do. So, so I think, I think more oversight by the village president, not so much, uh, daily attendance.
Or is it? That's fine. I, I can certainly live with that. I think that, um, you know, I'm just going to adjust my hours of, of being able to. Just adjust my hours here. It will provide, um, uh, information going on Mondays. I meet with Jessica every, uh, every Wednesday for a while and know what's going on. This could be a little more than that, but I'm willing to do that.
Fine. Dana. And so I think you're the one that knows possibly about this in terms of.
I'm in agreement with Trustee Schwartz. Sir.
This conversation is appreciated because my heart, my hearts, I feel for our community right now. And I appreciate you guys reminding me that it's policy and we have to be focused. So with that conversation, I've. I agree that, um, your increased presence here as a communication conduit only. With no compensation is something that I would agree upon. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, I also agree that it's, we, we should have someone to help out a little bit of that. As more communication, making sure that, you know, people are heard when their interim is no longer, is not in the building at the time. Um, maybe a little bit of priority work, but not too much of that. But yeah.
Well, what I probably plan on doing is I'll probably put in, I plan on putting about an additional four hours in here. I'll probably come in on Fridays. We'll figure out the, the, the work that, uh, our next, uh, business is going to do and how we schedule them and we'll get them. So thank you. Thank you all for your support. Yes.
Um, are we going to discuss what we think or as a group? Um, what the new interim administrator, their hours or what we might feel is important.
Um, I, let's get through the next piece here and we can, we can talk about that. Uh, next question we have here is, uh, approval of proposal with public administration associates. Provide an interim administrator with a start date of October sixth, subject to attorney review. Um, I think you've all seen the proposal from PAA that was part of this attachment. Time, I know that, uh, I have been in contact with, um, uh, Jonathan regarding, um, specific contract. Um, with them and, uh, we've got some suggestions going back to them. But, um, uh, I would look for a motion in a second for a proposal. PAA to provide interim village administrator.
Okay.
Motion in second, questions and discussions on village administration.
Um, I just, the part of the contract is going to part of the package there. Um, I'm assuming that it's. Uh, something PAA does. Obviously they had properly a straightforward contract about how they do things or not.
It, it's straightforward and I beefed it up quite a bit.
Um, beefed it up to, for what purpose? I mean, to protect us a little bit or to?
To protect us and be a little more specific.
And then we can be a little bit more proactive forward.
Within reason, yes. I mean, I think, I think it's important for all of you to understand that the. Legally speaking, there is a very big difference between a, a independent contractor and an employee. So we are limited in the extent to which we can. Uh, you know, exercise the same control over a contractor that you would over the employee. For example, uh, I made clear in the contract that the services have to be performed between eight AM and four thirty PM, Monday through Friday. And for meetings that hap- happen after four thirty. Um, and that we will work sort of cooperatively with the contractor. But the law of independent contractors is they still ultimately get to decide sort of how and when they perform. Uh, the services that are required of them. So it's a little bit of a balancing act. Uh, because we can't sort of. Order them to do things the same way you can with an employee.
And that brings up, I think, the hours, Lisa, that you were bringing up in that, um, this is going to be, have to be negotiated between his availability and us and what our needs are. So I think that we're going to look to, um, see what our needs are. And again, Mondays and Thursdays are probably going to be full, almost full time days. And then we will pick other days that we will be here part time. But I think we, our biggest needs that we need right now. Is, uh, for packet assembly and, um, also for, um, uh, for our meetings. So that, um, uh, he's available to do that and get that done. That's his primary job and that's how it's, how he's.
Oh, and especially on Monday because I know there's a village department had meeting at with eleven. And so he'll probably be here from at least that time to seven PM. So we already have an eight hour day. So, you know, possibly on that day he comes in at, you know, ten thirty or something so that we don't burn our hours on Monday.
And, and the other thing is, is that, um, so I was talking with the PAA, they ran us problems, but all of the hours have to be approved by me. And therefore by all. Instead that I have to sign off on this time sheet. And that's something that we made sure was very clear with, uh, PAA and in the contract revision.
And, and one of the, the way the contract is drafted is it's capped at twenty hours per week with an understanding that. There may be weeks where up to five hours is necessary in a week, but then that gets subtracted off. The following week. So if he has to work twenty five hours in week one, that means week two, it goes down to fifteen hours. So. It keeps that twenty hour a week average while allowing for a little bit of flexibility on the margins.
And as, you know, I don't see as much of a, you know, we get to a point where we find that we need more support. Certainly we can revise the contract, but I think it's more right now, let's do what we need to do. And from this village, uh, like I said, I'm hopeful that by, you know, January one, we have somebody in place for the role. I think at this point in time, it's just. I have to talk with, I haven't even met Clint yet. I can't meet him until. He is capable and that will be, I think Mondays and Thursdays are the heaviest day, Jessica.
Yes.
And then I think, you know, we'll probably have him on Tuesdays and Fridays and I'll come in, um, come. On Fridays to make sure that everything is fine. And I'll keep him very tight. You know, I already have meetings set up with, I actually am going to. So that's. There. So anyway, any further discussion of this? Now, okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. That motion carries. Uh, next, uh, item here, of course, is, uh, now that we have agreement, uh, on the proposal, PAA. Um, approval of formal appointment of Clint Ripley as contracted interim village administrator effective upon resignation of current interim, interim village administrator. Um, I'll need a motion in a second to bring that to discussion.
I make the motion.
A second.
Very good. Thank you very much. Uh, as we said, um, actually as active, um, uh, as interim village administrator. We, we put that in the contract before thirty on the tenth, correct?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Four thirty on the.
We're, we're essentially just making sure that, uh. Uh, his actual duties as interim village administrator begin when the current interim village administrator's departure is effective. So there's no.
Right.
No empty chair.
I would assume Jessica's going to be dusting the wind at four twenty nine or at least at some type of, um, at some type of a celebration party or, uh, one thing or the other. But I think that that's, uh, that's when he would come to play. However, we are going to, as part of the contract, as the start date, it would be October sixth. So we get some time so he can meet with Jessica. Um, I have, uh, my information with Mr. Ripley is exactly what you have. Uh, and again, I'm hopeful to meet with him either, um, after this is approved either. Hold, he will, um, be able to give us some very good insights on our village. On the other hand, I, I really want him to get a sense of what our village is about before we start making any, uh, anything. He, he will be fine with us, uh, uh, from what I'm hearing. So questions about Mr. Ripley. All right. Doesn't seem like we have any. So a little motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay. Next on the agenda, informational discussion regarding RFP for interim community development director. Um, I'll bring this up because, um, of course. We will need to have somebody to replace Jessica as the community development. And, um, as we did with, um, public works and we got the contractor in, um, in, uh, in Bank and Bolton, Bolton Bank.
Bolton and make.
Bolton and make. Um, Jessica and I have had a discussion in the past couple of weeks about how we can move forward with planning. And, um, we can certainly enter in and direct Jessica to get an RFP out this evening. So that we can start looking for people who can serve on an interim basis for, uh, as a community development, uh, director. Go ahead.
President Delora, if I could just, um, offer some, some, just quick, quick comment here. So I, I know that the. Um, agenda here says interim community development director, but I, I'm recommending to the board that, that, uh. That this person is, that would be hired, would serve as basically the village's planner. Um, in, in that capacity and not actually have department head responsibilities. I don't think that would be appropriate for a consultant to be a department head. Um, it would be similar to what, uh, Mr. Kimis is doing as an engineering consultant. This person would be the planning consultant. So.
Most of this is sitting in term. P together in anticipation. Motion here. Be able to get an RFP out, um, hopefully put a very short timeframe on response on that. So that we have someone who's going to be also be able to come in Jessica's last week. And be able to, um, be oriented on what we need our planner to do. Um, that's the, um, that's something that I just wanted to give you guys information on. Lisa.
Jessica, the company Bolton and make are, so would they be giving us one? One person or would they say, here's three people you can choose? Are they?
Well, we, we.
Just, it's not, I'm saying it's like Bolton and make.
Oh, okay.
Right now, I want to put an art, you know, with a.
Well.
Perhaps I was in the theory.
Bolton and make actually does not have city planners on staff in Wisconsin. They do in the twin cities, but I don't think it would be effective. For someone to be a planner from that, from that distance. So Kevin is doing a great job for us, but unfortunately Bolton to make does not have the staff. To do the, the planning work. So there are several planning consultants in, in Wisconsin. Um, planning firms or firms that provide planning services and I'll be reaching out to them.
Thank you.
Discussion. Just. Assistant administrator can be. Like some direction from the board. Um, right now our job classification is for assistant administrator, community development director. Um, and we went forward and we looked to PAA to be able to recruit. And as a matter of fact, I do have a, um, I do have an RFP for us, uh, community development director. But we don't have a job classification like that anymore. So what I'd like to find out from the, uh, uh, from the trustees here. If in fact, we want to go forward with a community development director or we want to go forward with an assistant village admin. Or we want to go forward with an assistant village administrator slash community director. My recommendation is to go forward with community development director. If in fact, um, the new administrator comes on board and says, I need an assistant administrator. That can be decided at that point in time. Uh, I'm just looking for some feedback on it and I can tell you what if this is something that uh, the village board would like to. Stuff. Yes.
I I, me personally, I I think that we be, we need to be looking for a community development director first. And then that assistant village administrator position uh. Maybe melded in with another position or that position uh. As a, as a revision later. Uh, my concern about it is. Um. When you're starting to, you you're, you're, you're going to have, there's two, I see two separate uh, job duties there. Um, in the sense that. The assistant village administrator would have. You know, like what we're looking for for a village administrator type of. Talent, not necessarily community development director. And I guess my preference would be that we're we're seeking a community development director that aligns with what, what uh. We're looking at our planning, our documents, uh, aligns with our position on where we want to take the village. And then. That assistant village administrator position might be an add-on to perhaps a different position at some point in time. To give that, to give. A person who's looking for upward mobility, the ability to interface with the village administrator and then maybe move into that village administrator role. Kind of like what we did in the past. That would be my thought process because I'd, I'd rather recruit a, you know, an excellent community development director than have. The allowance that that person could add on those duties and move forward if that's the.
Lisa.
Um, so would we be doing this kind of in parallel with hiring the new administrator? Because I just am concerned that we want them to mesh and at some point we want the, the administrator, you know, who may or may not have. Development experience. We may want those to be able to work together. So I, is it, is it that character for the horse?
No, it's not. And that's why we kind of slow it down. Permission. Oh. Like positions such as mine and also from P A A is we need to recruit the village administrator first. And then we recruit, honestly, the timelines that you guys will get. Later this week, I'll show you what the timelines are about that new, potential new village administrator will be tired of choosing process with E P W. And for creative or director. So no, we're, that's why it's.
Yeah.
It's kind of slowing it down because I got a couple of other steps I got to talk about. So you're C D V, um, not C D V administrator, right?
Correct. I think it's. It's on the community development director and. You know, it's got to be this and that, but maybe we'll have a bigger pool of the juice from it. It's just that focus as well.
Kevin, sweetie.
Yeah, uh, I agree that we should just focus on the community development director. Um, we should really see if our new administrator needs a assistant too. Sir.
I echo what our fellow trustees have said so far.
Thank you.
David?
Community health. Great. Okay, um, thank you for that. Um, that that's what I was hoping for because I think our next step will be to. What we're going to need to do is we're going to need to reclassify the position. Next um, H R, sorry.
Question. Um, are all the R F Ps going to be posted? Or like share?
Um, I think that's probably a good question or. Rest that after the meeting that he could take it.
That that would be a question for Kevin.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Are we talking about? What are you talking about?
I'm sorry, trustees. Do you mean the 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 planning consultant firm R F P or do you mean the community development director posting? The second one, yeah. So Kevin from P A A will will be able to answer that question about where it would be, what would that?
So you know. We'll getting. Local process. I already had that, but I got to come. Good to get your approval, the board's approval to move forward with the C D D. Okay, so with that said, I mean, we will need to go to H R and um, H R and finance at the next meeting. To um, work on a job classification for the community development director. So that'll be the next step shortly thereafter. Which uh, probably at the next meeting, we will have to um, uh, also get bill for approval for. Classification, a classification for this position. So that's why it's kind of a, kind of put a slowdown on P A A. Coming forward and saying, uh, we can recruit everybody at the same time. Uh, so in that proposal, um, just to let you know, um. Once we get to that point, I have a proposal ready to roll. Um, and it's uh, in its entirety, and I'll share, share that with you. When we are at that point that we want to use P A to recruit for the community development director. It's pretty much standard. And it's pretty much, uh, you know, we'll get to that point when we get to that point. So any other questions on that? So I want to be really clear. We have a staffing plan. We have a recruitment plan. And um, I think that as we look at a timeline, we're looking at, we potentially have all of these folks in place by. Um, January one, from what I'm hearing, actually sitting in a seat. I'm hopeful for that and we, you know, move forward.
And and you also wanted us to take note of being available.
Yes.
For.
Yes, I would, I, yes, I would suggest that as the. As we're talking about recruitment and strategy for assistant village or for the community development director. What we're seeing is is that that process of hiring for the C D D and the Department of Public Works. Is a little bit different than. The position to hire the administrator. The hiring of the administrator is fully our responsibility. So the week of November tenth, please keep Monday and Tuesday open. Um, as we will probably be going through that process of um. The candidates, the two candidates come into the village. We have a soiree for them and a, uh, soiree is probably a bad word. But we'll have an introduction to the uh, public. It gives the public the opportunity to meet the candidates. And then the next day we will be spending uh, probably the next evening because. Most, most of you all work, um, we will be going through and actually picking the candidates uh, the next day. So that probably will be Tuesday. But just keep that early part of the week open if you won't mind.
And it's for the administrative assistant position?
No, ma'am.
That's for the C D D and the D P W?
No, ma'am. Uh, November tenth will be for the hiring of the um, administrator, the legit administrator.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, look for a motion to adjourn.
Oh, second.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and we will.